All right, we'll call the meeting now to order seven oh six if everyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, uh, quick call call, Mayor Moser is present, trustees Wolf, trustee
Eric.
Smith, trustee Crawford are present, trustee uh, Fieber is absent, clerk McQuaid.
Here.
Attorney France.
Present.
DBW superintendent Wolf.
Here.
And treasurer, you said.
Here.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes from December fourteenth for the regular board meeting. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, you're going to approve. Mayor, can you hand me that, please? All right, public comment, all right, we're gonna start off with uh-
Here's that, before, I don't know if you want any copies of anything.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
See here, we're gonna start off with Jake and Marion, uh, who are here to go over and explain the process and everything that the village ticket approved, uh, for the water grant up to one point two million dollars. So, if you guys need to correlate or help, you do present, appreciate it. The time is over to you guys.
All right, you guys may have seen the letter that you've just recently received, um, explaining that you were awarded water grant funds. Um, we had applied for that back in September roughly, um, just to see what you would get, because we weren't sure. Um, at that time, we looked at downsizing the project, which we had done a little bit. So, the project was not quite as large as what we originally had. In fact, this is the budget that we use on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
We have that lasted.
If you look at this, it's a three-page piece of paper. The first page is the combined budget, and what I've done on the next two pages is broken up phase one and phase two. For obvious reasons, phase one, we already have funding for, phase two, this is what the water grant is going to be applied against. So, don't get too upset here when you see that the total project on the bottom list is two million, seven hundred and three thousand. Of that, you already have the six hundred thousand, um, plus you had, if you look at the second page, you had roughly six hundred and seventy thousand that you're spending on phase one. And the reason it's six seventy is you guys had some grant funds that you used already from DEC. You had some Southern Tier West money, and you had the six hundred thousand from, um, CDVG. And then there was, um, a little bit of local share in there, not quite fifty thousand, that's what I've got it on here. Those that you guys paid before we could get the CDVG, uh, funds in place. So, this one's pretty well set, you guys know that your share on this is pretty much forty seven thousand, between forty seven thousand and fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars, okay? Second page is the one here on our student. The second page shows that the phase two is two million, thirty-three thousand. And this is the water grant, which you were awarded, one million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. I put in three thousand there just to put the other fifty thousand, you said it always been a fifty thousand number, I don't know if we'll actually use that. Doing that, this makes your loan share seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars, okay? And that would come from the drinking water state revolving fund. Now, if you guys remember, there was an intended use plan that annually we try to get on, and you guys have a score on that intended use plan of a hundred and thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five, thank you. Which is good, however, the subsidy line is five points above that at a hundred and thirty. So, you do not get a zero percent loan, however, you can get loan. The loan on this for short term is less than one percent. The last short-term loans that they closed were point eight-four percent. That's better than I can get you on the public market, now that's short term, so that's while you're building it, okay? Once you finish construction, and you know what your final number is, you would bond with the state revolving fund. And you would bond with a subsidized interest rate. So, for example, if the interest rate was six percent, you guys would be four, now, that's not how high it's going to be. We've already done the calculation based off of the last loan pool that they did, which was last July, and your interest rate will be about two point four-five percent. And you have that loan for thirty years, okay? Now, looking at that, and the other thing that I did when I put your SRF application in, just so you know that fifty thousand dollars that's been floating around that's your share, I stuck that in there too, so that you didn't have to pay for it, it would be part of the loan if we wanted to be. That also means that, um, it would be part of the loan. So, what I did, ran the amortization schedule, I ran it a little bit higher, I ran it for eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, just because it includes that extra money, all right? Running this for thirty years, and I'm assuming that you have five hundred and thirty, um, equivalent value in this, which is what we've always used, we assume that that's the number of people paying it back. You're gonna pay an average of seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents per user additional for that.
Per year.
Seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents per user, per year. Over the thirty years, so every year, and it'll fluctuate slightly, you know, a few cents here, a few cents there, but that's the average of what it's going to be, okay?
So, how forty-one thousand will be paying a year, is that something about right?
Um, that makes sense, yeah. It fluctuates between thirty-nine to forty-two, so, yeah, it's pretty different. Unfortunately, like a car loan, I can't get it to be four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-six cents or whatever, it fluctuates.
Okay.
Okay? So, now the other thing to know here, the water grant, when I put this number in here, the water grant is on a percentage basis, okay? You get sixty percent of whatever is not already paid for by other grant. So, if you wanted to spend this project, if you only spend, say, two million rather than two million, thirty-three thousand, it's gonna be less.
Right.
Okay, but you would also bond less, so, I'm just saying, it is based on a percentage, okay?
So, will the short term, will that be until the project's done, and then to, then we would have to subsidize?
Yes, what the normal plan is, is you would do short term, um, the normal short-term loans are three years. They can be extended sometimes up to five, depending on what's going on, and then it would go to long term. Okay, and you have up to thirty years to pay them, I know you don't want to, but if you wanted to pay it twenty years, you could. But, it's thirty, it's been more than thirty years. If you make any principal payments on that short-term loan, and you will have to in the second year, those will come off and you'll bond less, okay?
Okay.
Does that make sense? So, if you make a ten thousand dollar principal payment, let's say that's gonna come off the amount that the bond's gonna be, so the bond will be less over the term, okay?
Okay.
Now, the letter that you guys received says that they need to have an answer back by Friday, whether you want to go forward with this. So, I know that's a lot of thinking, but I need you to think about whether this is what you want to do.
Now, we talked about that magic number line that we're just below by five points.
Yes.
Other communities and stuff, they got this, or any of those other communities above that that are getting this? So, that if we didn't take it, we stand to move above that line?
No, no, we have tried for, I don't know, two, three years now, at least to get your score higher, or to get the funding line lower. We haven't been successful with either, the score is pretty much the maximum score you're going to get.
Right, but I thought if ones came off the top, it would move us up.
Not necessarily, it depends on how many people apply every year, and with the water grant, a lot of people are applying, because, you know, there's free money out there to be had.
Mary, can you also-
We fought for the score of one twenty-five, and we had to argue and go back and forth, and Eric even helped us, because they had us when they first scored us, I think it was a one fifteen, right Eric? And then we argued and had to come up with the extra ten points, get close, we were just underneath the funding line.
Yeah.
Um, but still even being under the funding line didn't mean it was grant, it was just mean loan line, so, I mean-
Mary, could you explain, I mean, at least so they understand, in a theoretical world where the project did score higher, and was funded through that type of funding scenario, um, things like target service charges and the fact that they're not, you know, making up the same grant money?
There's a couple things, say you were above that magic funding line, you would still have a loan. You would have a zero percent loan, but you would still have a loan.
Right.
Okay? Um, the other thing that's, that is something playing into this, is the agencies look at a target service charge, which is what Jake is referring to, which is based on your median household income. You guys have, um, I think the higher, the two, you have two median household incomes that we came up with. One of them by, when we did the income survey, was lower than the other ones, so hang on here a second, because I should remember what these are.
Was it thirty-three or thirty-seven?
Uh, I think one of them is, the other ones are much higher. Okay, you have one section, that's the town outside the village, they're thirty-six thousand. Inside the village is fifty-three thousand. And if we blended those two, you're still going to be quite a bit higher. So, and what they normally do is they take, it's basically a function of a percentage of your median household income. So, um, you'd be looking at anywhere from probably one point five percent is what some of the agencies look for. So, where you're at now, um, and given the O and M that I've, that we've always used on this, which is pretty much what you're currently paying, you'd be paying with O and M and with the additional loan, about five forty, five hundred, five forty per user, per year. That's with your operation and maintenance, and that's with your debt service. So, and what happens is that target service charge at those higher numbers is probably going to be higher than that, so there's not additional grant money available, because one of the things we thought about is going to rural development to see if that would be worth it.
No.
No. They, I can't get the target, I can't get that service charge long enough for them to give you more money.
So, the target service charge, they establish a point, and they say, this is what we think is reasonable for users to be paying for water, and we'll give you grant if necessary to get your annual cost down to that threshold, but they will not give you grant to lower it below that.
Correct.
And if that point is higher than what you're paying right now, then they're gonna say, okay, we'll give you a loan, we'll give you a loan, we'll give you a loan, and you may not qualify for grant until you're, and if it might be somewhat higher than what we're paying right now, it's at four hundred and something, I mean-
Um, twenty-two, was it, it's like four fifty?
Mary pulled your current O and M back from your current budget, basically what is your water budget right now?
Yep.
So, that's what costs to run your water system and pay your loans.
That's still the same number of people pay for your operation and maintenance, so.
So, even going at, the number that we talked about, probably more accurate EDU or like around four-twenty, we'd be right around, there'd be a hundred dollars annually then.
Yes.
So, always high market, and then we get, if it's lower, then it's always great, so, say it's a hundred dollars, that's-
The number of EDUs, like we said, five-thirties, the number of accounts you had in your building.
Right.
Wherein some of those, we've established, a few of them can probably be closed, but something to be aware of is that some of your accounts, like your commercial users, are using substantially more than a typical user.
Like the school and center steps here.
There's-
So, so, it's not like every single user is paying the same equal amount for the project? But, commercially, either just by virtue of using several tanks more water than a house is gonna pay more. It, with, once you have meters that are working.
Yes.
For sure. So, we're talking bonding, seven hundred and- Eight hundred.
Hundred thousand.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, roughly.
Which I would think though, in the end though, we'd be able to get that down with what John and the guys are able to do as far as self-work. Maybe able to get that down a little bit, you think? I mean, it's, again, it's gonna keep away from what we're maybe as far as grant, but should also help reduce bonds, maybe not drastically, but-
Well, you know, if you guys can figure the numbers, which I don't really run, then you can see if it's worth it to you, too, that's, that's an option. You know, is it worth it to reduce this by, or using our resources, here's how much it's gonna take off the-
For, for a generalized, phase one of the project, um, is rehab at Kelly Summit Springs, so we work at that spring site, metering in the village, and then what we've been calling master metering, which is, um, some meters where the springs come together by cobble well, so you know how much water you're losing, if any, on transmission mains. Um, and a meter up at the tank, so you know how much water is getting to the tank, leaving the tank. And, um, phase two, which is not only the two million dollar part of the project, is transmission main from Kelly Summit Springs into the boundary of the village, where you pick up newer pipeline that's been built on it recently. Um, and so, phase two is pretty clean pipeline project. So, you know, that, that comes a whole nother question of if you guys wanna try to do any of that yourself, it's, it's not as diversified as the work in phase one, where at this point, the village is, I believe, moving forward with having your guys do some of the spring rehab work with the plant.
Right.
And that is acceptable to SRF if you wanna do that, just remember, you still have to run, so you don't wanna run so late that you can't, you know, ruin your normal operations.
Right.
I guess you could do something like breakout, surface restoration, you know, let this contractor install a pipeline, and your crew go back through, clean it up and plant grass, like, there's ways you could do some work, but it's not as readily, uh, readily able to be done by your crews as, say, installing meters, the first phase. But the first phase, it's all grant money.
Yes.
Essentially, so, doing work yourself isn't quite as, uh, quite as beneficial as, sort of, like-
But if we save that though, then that can go towards, I mean, essentially they go towards phase two? Were able to say save fifty thousand or something by self-performing?
Part of the problem is that CDVG wants us to expend the funds by December of this year.
Yes, I knew there was a difference.
And the phase two, the phase two part of work, um, that's highly aggressive to say that you're gonna be building stuff by December of this coming year. It's part of, part of the deal. But any, you know, we haven't done anything towards that pipeline survey, finishing up, you know, we did all this need for review with environmental.
Right.
And part of that was arguing with agencies like Army Corps to say, we don't know exactly where that pipe's gonna go in phase two, if phase two ever happens.
Or, um, engineering cost.
We have, we have, we can, we do have some, but CDVG has an issue with, we can't charge before the contract was signed. So, early ones, we can't send over there. Um, and then they also have a cap on what they'll allow percentage-wise. We might be able, if we had split, we might be able to put some inspection in there if we had to.
Like, and, I'm thinking, if we have to expend it by December, and these guys are gonna be working on phase two by then, can we pay them for the work they're doing up until December, if we have fifty thousand left over in the first round?
We'd have to clear it with the agency, um-
Might have to be a way to save money in phase two, and still move along.
I see what you're saying, just move it, it's a matter of what we can move, um-
We're gonna be able to play around a little bit with the pipeline device, because I've seen, based off of my graphical map, at least I have pipelines from the spring plant down to three fifty-three. We might be able to say that's part of the collection piping at Kelly Summit, and at least get the pipe down to the road if we have extra-
Spend all that money and a pipe down the road over right now.
Yeah, and we gotta leave that on the table, I agree.
From the plant?
Yep.
I said I didn't sum it down to bottom of the hill, I remember correctly.
Am I right, Jake, originally we had all of this in there, so, CDVG's gonna say, okay, this is still in the original scope, before all this?
Yeah, CDVG, when we made the original application, we said, this is a whole big project, but I think the time that line is gonna be more like-
We're good to the bottom of the hill, there's new pipe to the bottom of the hill, I don't know if it crossed three fifty-three or not.
Yeah, you picked up, you picked up the old pipe, came over to the plant, and then new pipe down to the road.
Yeah, the new pipe went from the, from the filter plant down, they ran it at an angle, almost crossing, the driveway goes up this angle, and the other pipe goes down an angle towards Little Valley. That's new, I believe, all the way down to the road, that wouldn't need to be replaced.
Up down there and stay around that southern road, stay away from that fiber optic and make some time.
So, but, and that just illustrates that we haven't finished, um, the preliminary stuff of, you know, where is there a fiber optic here? Where's there a wetland along that alignment, so you're not gonna be building a pipeline along that side of the road by December of this year.
Right, that's not gonna need till twenty seventeen.
Yeah, no, but, uh, CDVG really doesn't want to give the money back, they, they want you to have it all.
Right.
We've asked for several extensions, if we were pretty close to the end, I would still entertain asking for another one if I needed to.
Right, right.
Um, because, you know, you've done what you needed to, um, don't know how we'd go over, but we could certainly ask. And I know that it's more, it is more problem for them to give the money back than it is to find a way for you to be able to use it.
Right.
It really is, so, they're both willing to get you all that money.
So, essentially, I mean, so we gotta make the decision on whether to move forward or not, sort of amounts to. The only, I mean, so looking at the numbers from a financial standpoint, for those that say, no, we should hold off, is, and wait till, you know, you, you know, until something doesn't happen, so right now, we're at two point eight million. Say two point two, because we have, uh, because we got CBD, CDVG money, we're always gonna have that, so take that out of the equation. So, we're at two point two, is what it would be if we were to cost out of pocket, and we're looking at eight hundred. So, you're almost talking it's three hundred percent more, so if we don't do this in, say, in the next five, ten years, something, when the pipes do go, now you're talking it's at least three hundred dollars per EDU, and it's probably gonna go up even more, because what there's, was the cost of maintenance every year, construction that goes up every year, was it three percent, five percent?
It's a percentage.
It depends if it goes up or not.
But it does go up there.
I mean, what, when we started this, we were looking at three point four for all phase one, now it's over four million. So, and that's in a couple of years, so.
It does, well, the other thing to remember is right now, this water grant is an unusual opportunity, there's only three years for it, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and then it goes away, I don't normally have this kind of funding.
No.
And you, without this, you guys would've stayed below the funding line, no grant.
No, nothing.
No, nothing.
You got subsidized.
So, yeah, subsidized, that's just, would be it, which-
What, two point four-five for subsidizes, a good rate, especially with rates going up?
It is, you know, and, and it's, it's nice, because the other thing is, you know, don't give you the short-term loan to at a good rate, it's there. But, like I said, funding always changes, I can't guarantee that we would be able to get this package again.
Well, and what, they, governor gave what, six municipalities in this county or everywhere else, and we got two municipalities, so, for whatever reason, our area is getting some huge funding, whether it be someone from pushing in the senate, or lobbyists or something, but I don't think it's coincidental, I think it's-
It is not, I think this area does not get as much traditionally, so they're, they're starting to push on this area, because it's been realized you guys don't get as much for, for-
Project is just a dollar value, and, and as we're saying, this is still a somewhat scaled back project from the original more ambitious project. This is only picking up one side of the fork.
Right.
For a project of this magnitude, you're not seeing a hundred percent grant funded projects.
I, I've been doing this for twenty years, I had one project that's been a hundred percent grant funded, and that came one era, okay? And, uh, we changed funding for different times before we got it, but we finally had one project that was totally right.
The moral of the story is that for a project this big, it usually happens that you end up paying some loan.
Go ahead.
I just add a couple of things here, I mean, I'm listening to all of it, and you're adding seventy-six dollars per average customer, and that's where you're at right now. You put in this new line from Kelly Summit to, into the village, right now, you go through a hundred and fifty gallons a minute to feed the village. Job shut down the line earlier this year, and you figured inside the village, you're using eighty gallons a minute. So, we're losing seventy gallons a minute somewhere outside of this village on average right now. Water loss is unacceptable to have fifty percent, Eric, I mean, um, so we will cut down how much it costs to use the water. I mean, operations is gonna go down when you start not having that line loss. Issues with air hopefully will go away, that we have in the lines there. Uh, when you put in your new meters, uh, what I've been doing, a lot of research on, people say you pretty much can look at adding ten percent revenue, uh, by, by what you, by putting in new meters, that's a minimum. So, your budget is how much, Rose, the water budget, three hundred, and what's your total water budget for revenues? Gene?
Water budget is for everything, two hundred and forty-six, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, revenues is two hundred and ten thousand.
So, if you added ten percent to that, you're almost halfway on your forty thousand per year, that's if you add ten percent. I, just today, I went to another community, just redid all the meter system, put the whole thing in, um, I mean, it's fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred and some meters. I went out and did a read with them, we did it in less than an hour, uh, watched the billing process, that took less than twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes, to have it all transferred from the computer over to the billing, and ready to print out and generate your bills. So, I mean, you're gonna save a ton of time, a ton of money in that aspect of it, on top of the twenty-one thousand there. Um, and the one thing I didn't, I, I planned on doing a meter change myself, and, and go on and counts, and I'm hoping to, the one thing I didn't take into effect was my large meters. And what they do here, these, these people are really on top of it, they change every large meter out every ten years. And they figured they lose, they just did it, and they showed me the, the loss margins on, on some of their factories in two-inch meters, they were going through one point two gallons a month, one point two million gallons a month, to two point five, two point six million gallons. It was reading half, half the water, so you hit your bigger users in the village, the school, uh, you know, maybe, uh, center six tests were just to replace those meters, your revenue's gonna go up, I don't think you're really gonna see a true seventy-six dollar flat across the board increase to get this project done. I mean, it's hard to say until you get your meters and all that stuff done, but I don't, I mean, well, you're gonna make billing fair by finally hitting new meters. Um, and then all, and every place else that you're gonna cut by having and putting a new line in, less water waste, you know, less flooring, less expenses, less different things. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways, I don't see it costing, I mean, overall, the money's gonna come from somewhere, someone has to pay for it, but it's gonna be a fair and more evenly balanced way of doing things than is currently being done now.
So, you have anything to add, sir?
I agree a hundred percent about the meters, that's why, one of the reasons we definitely wanted to support that and use those CDVG funds for that, because it's just gonna put you on better financial ground to, uh, to pay back whatever loan portion you have remaining after phase two.
And that is what they're saying is a minimum, there's a possibility, it could be twenty percent or thirty percent revenue increase. I mean, and how old our system is, and how old the meters are, and, and just the ability to be doing, another thing I learned here today, and this system here does it, um, every, it's like our sewer, the non, every property gets a, a water bill, at least a, a minimum water bill. If you go to Florida and you shut your water off for six months, you get billed for the six months, because you can't lay people off, because people go to Florida, you can't do this, there's cost. They still have the same fire protection, water in front of their houses, so they get a bill, at least a minimum bill for quarters of the year, which really helps for budgetary purposes as well. So, I know that's an option, and that, those, I, I've heard of a few places, I know Perrysburg does that, and I thought, they didn't give me the reasons why they did it today, you know, because you, if you have thirty people go, or forty people shut off, I mean, you're still putting water, your house burns, you're using the same water everyone else is paying for to put on there, so.
Those are the exact reasons they have it.
It is, I think it's the same benefits as everybody else.
The same benefit is there, I mean, because they, because they choose only another six months, doesn't mean that they only have to pay.
Is that in their water law then?
Or, I believe it is in their water law, or-
They probably have something for seasonal users, or they just talk about the shut-off.
And then you still can have a shut-off charges and stuff, but they still get a minimum bill year-round. So, I, and I know, from what I've talked, and then they said quite a few places, that's, a lot of places are like that, it's not common in this area, I don't think, but.
Rose, will you break it down so that we can talk about that at a, another time? I think that's a great idea.
So, and then I, and the other thing is too, is I know when you- When you read, when you redid your, your water law, I believe in there, two, if you have one meter, three apartments, uh, they're supposed to be built for three, for three minimums, so I don't know if you guys have done- Uh, they're supposed to be built for three, the three minimums, so I don't know if you guys have done that or gone through and assessing the properties to. To add any of those that are aren't on there. Um, but that's definitely another, it's another source of revenue to to level the playing field. So, and. A lot of it can be done. Right, but a lot of it can be done, the ones you know, but when you put the new meters in, you go in and, you know, like, uh, they said up there, they had people. Look to see if there was two hot water tanks when they're in the basement, or if there's two electric meters. And every place that they were replacing one meter and they saw two things, and they had someone come in and evaluate it. That was just the way that they did their checks when they were up there. So that was, I thought was interesting.
So we can. So like when we're doing the next water check? Or billing, I should say, then you guys go check the meters to see how many are there and. Which which should be so that people are being billed properly? For the budget.
And the new water law does give the authority to the water operator to do that. And it's something that, although it's not being done this instant, that's something that needs to be implemented over time in order for the village to be in compliance with its new law.
Okay.
It's it's not an all or nothing. It's it's not like if you can't actually get every apartment, you shouldn't do the ones you can.
Well, I mean, currently, there's something I know, there's some buildings that have two meters for two apartments, or there's. Uh, it's five or six meters up here for the apartments that they have. Um, I don't call them to his. So I know there there was.
Yeah.
Um, I know some of them are that way and some are, so I. It it makes it, it makes it fair across the board to everyone that has has apartments or rentals, if some are paying and some aren't.
Right.
I mean, if you get ten services a year, that's another four grand. I mean, that that, you're nibbling away at the forty-one thousand.
Right.
That's gonna do, and it's all you're doing is you're 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 billing people equally and fairly.
So we need to make a vote on.
You need to decide whether you wanna continue with the water grant, because if you do, you're gonna need to fill out and sign that, you know, report. And then we'll get Jacob with the uh, schedule to it.
And when I went on the New York State website under project detail for the village, under description, it's talking about town of Ashford.
Yeah, I I looked at that. There's, there is a project in Ashford. I mean, they put that map together that they gave little icons you could hover over. They have the same description on the icon for Cataract Sand for the project in Ashford. So it's, it basically, it's an error in our IT department, but I did notice that.
Yeah.
Their description.
I don't know if that's part of, so where they have the estimate of eight hundred and twenty thousand, is that the villages or is that on the Ashford?
I believe that's the proper.
Now, two oh five two, this is this is us.
Okay.
Two oh five two was the estimated. Total phase two project. That is the estimate of what the actual maximum would be with the sixty percent grant.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for, and folks that came out to inform the board? Anybody have anything to add to that?
Well, thank you for coming.
So then, we can make a motion that.
If we wanna move forward, we need to make a motion to do so, or we need to get three to sign.
Okay.
And then we need to get that turned in by Friday, so.
I'd like to discuss it before we do.
So, what would you like to discuss?
Where are we gonna pay for one point eight million dollars worth of debt for water? We're already a billion dollars in debt, now we're gonna add another three quarters of a million. How are we, how do we tell these residents of this village to put another three quarters of a million dollars in debt? I mean, we've got a sewer benefit fund that's uh, the sewer benefit. That is supposed to end this year. We pretty much can't end that, so they're still gonna have to pay that. How can we add more to them?
And what you do when, five years down the road, the water transmission line goes. Now we gotta spend three million dollars of our own pocket. We go out and buy, especially when rates are gonna go up. And cost is gonna go up, so it could be more than three million. That's what we've done in the past, is we've always rejected the bonds, or excuse me, grants that the state has offered us. And that's why we're in the financial predicament that we're in. And I can't see that being the responsible thing to do personally.
Show me how we're gonna pay for it, though. I mean, I I understand Jason's point of the the savings with the new meters, you know, the ten percent at a minimum. I just, I I need something more than than just that to to pay for this. I mean, I've talked to residents in the village and granted, it hasn't been money, but the ones I have talked to. They don't know how we can go anymore in that.
Well, our budget is gonna be the budget. I mean, we sent the email with what the state compterors office stated is what we're. But point one seven percent is what we can go up, or point one two percent.
Point one two.
Point one two and then go up?
It's a factor for, it is, goes into a formula. But it went from. Last year, we were at uh. Inflation factor was one point six eight. This year's gonna be point one two. So taxes are gonna be, you're gonna either have to go over the tax cap properly or cut in general. Because the factor went down.
What are we cutting?
That's what we have discussed in the work session.
Well, we need to figure out what we're gonna cut before we, but I I can't see us going over the tax gap.
Well, that's general. Now you're talking general, this is water.
Right.
Water.
Where you're gonna raise the money is by increasing everybody's rent.
Right.
Water, separate in general?
Yes.
So water's water, so it's not gonna affect land tax, property taxes.
It's gonna increase.
Increase their water bill.
No more, I mean, and even at the highest level, say, a hundred dollars per person in.
A year?
A year.
A year?
A year. So.
That was a seventy-six?
Seventy-six is what my calculation was, but that was based on five thirty E D U's, and you may have a few less, so let's say a hundred.
But and that's even still high because of businesses like Center Six, the school, that are breaking door more than just one E D U. So it's gonna be lower than that, but just say.
And and the efficiency factor, you know, you need to look at that, but I mean. Just for the efficiency factor and how many other pros are gonna go along with it? I mean, the difference, I mean, it's really, you're bringing apples and oranges. I mean, I I'm a resident, I pay taxes. I don't necessarily see a problem if the math is correct, spending twenty-five dollars more a quarter. To have the peace of mind that we're gonna have, you know, a very efficient meter system, very efficient uh, main. The the main repair, the transmission line. And on top of that, you have, um, you know, us looking into. Other, other properties that could possibly, you know, that that have water. Access, but it doesn't feel, you know? I mean, how many residents are receiving water that don't pay minimal?
Oh, I understand that.
Or pay minimal.
Or pay minimal.
I I think when all said and done, if the thing is forty thousand, I'm sorry, can I talk?
Go ahead.
I mean, if it's forty thousand dollars more, and if you look at the possibilities we can generate, you're close to thirty thousand. I'd say a minimum of what you're gonna generate between adding your 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 customers that aren't paying now, or your that. Fixing your meters, your revenues there, and just the savings you're gonna have for reading water meters and the billing and stuff. I mean, you're you're almost, you're three quarters of the way there, so I would. I really have a hard time believing that you're gonna see, and I, when we started this grant, man, obviously, I hope to use. Use the money for other things other than to pay for that when you get the increase of the meters, but. I I really don't see, I mean, worst case scenario, half of that, seventy-six or a hundred, being an annual cost. I mean, and if you don't, it couldn't, I would, and if we can't get the funding to do it, I mean, you're looking at three million dollars out of pocket. So you're, you're multiplying it by four, basically, you know?
Kind of no brainer.
You know, four times that, so if you're, you know, it could, we can't afford to double our water rates, but if you if you take them with a smaller percentage, eh?
Yeah, um, I mean, the bottom line is, the way I see it is, you've got a hundred year old transmission line. It has to be replaced. You you just, you're already living on borrowed time. And as Mary said, this is a special pot of money that's only available for three years. And out of the blue, is what it appears, is that they they're offering you one point two million dollars that you don't have to pay back. It's great. How can you turn that down possibly? And yes, you brought up that you already have some existing debt. But, and I I know I've looked at that in the past. Some of those bonds are gonna be coming up in future years. I don't remember when they're paid off. Yes, you are gonna see another increase in water rates initially, but as some of those other bonds are paid off, you know, some of that debt is is gonna go away. And so, um.
One problem with that is like, is if our sewer debt is paid off. I worry can't even take that away from the people right now. So, I'm arguing, how do we say, well, we take this on, we get rid of some of the debt, we haven't done what we're supposed to already? You know, like Jason was saying, you'll see a ten percent increase in the in the budget with the revenue coming in. Well, the problem is, is that revenue comes from the residents now. So I was kinda hoping on my end that, well, maybe this increase from the water mills going up of meters, the new meters and everything is, maybe we could've compensated that with. Lowering sewer benefit.
If we got a little something like that, it'd be an overing.
But, you know what I mean?
Well, then those that are on the sewer.
But now we're gonna put this going on.
Drastically. I mean, the sewer benefit's a no win situation on that, because people that don't get sewer, deal, they shouldn't have to pay it. People that are on sewer, it's extremely godly expensive. But here yet again, the reason we're in the financial predicament with sewer is because we didn't take a grant where the state was gonna be able to pay or cover eighty-three percent of it. And the boards at that time said we couldn't afford to cover that seventeen percent. So what do we do as history has shown? We take the whole grant, just like what we did with water back in the day when there was opportunity then and we chose not to. It's, I'm just trying to prevent what we've, the village has gone through, what votes have done in the past. From accruing more costs. That's why we're putting the predicament that we're in, financially speaking.
Yeah, this is the best financial package you're gonna get with this grant. You can't turn it down, that's the bottom line. Because that hundred year old line's gotta be replaced.
And part of your existing debt is, realistically speaking, is water treatment plants at the end of that line. But if that old line goes down, now you have infrastructure out there. I mean, it's not like the whole line's gonna evaporate overnight. It's, you can have breaks that could lead you without a good water source. And and it'll be scrambling. You can make repairs. Repairs can be expensive, especially if they're in a difficult access location. But right now, you've got a significant investment in treatment plants at the end of this line as it is.
And nobody likes to pay higher water rates or sewer rates or taxes, but that's the reality that we all face. And we probably all have mortgages in our homes. You borrow money and it costs, you know, it takes time to pay that back with interest. And anytime you can get grant, you know, you can't, you can't turn it down. You're getting the best package you can.
What would you like to ask? The money that's the loan, it's just from the water. It's not generated from taxes.
No.
Never will.
It's from water rates, water price.
Yeah, by law. You can only, you can only pay for this using the body water rates.
So where do you two stand?
I don't know. I don't either. I mean, the, like, another day, we're gonna make a decision for the fifteen, but.
Well, we'd have to do it tonight because of having a quorum. We can't make a vote unless all of us are here.
You could announce a meeting no sooner than Thursday of this week if you wanted another special meeting for it. This doesn't constitute an emergency, so you can't do it sooner than Saturday.
I don't want a whole other meeting. I'll make a decision on this tonight. I just need to think about it a little bit.
I mean, eh.
I've talked to about thirty people that just came out, and a single one of them has been behind it.
So they're behind that, having an infrastructure go?
Are they familiar with all the details?
Yeah, sure.
All the details? Have they been to every single one of these meetings and listened?
Well, I kind of filled them out on what was going on, and then they're they're tax payers, you know what I mean?
It's thirty cents a day.
It's a hundred dollars at most of a year.
It's thirty cents a day on top of everything else. It's like, it's just, it's not just the loans, it's it's all.
So then they would rather pay, instead of a hundred dollars annually, three to four hundred dollars, when it takes crap and we're really up?
Well, we can't predict that that'll happen for sure, or that we won't.
Till fifty years old, correct?
Hundred, hundred, hundred year old transmission.
Eighteen ninety is when it will start to, start to be put in, so you're looking at a hundred and twenty-five in some areas.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and I don't know, John, have you fixed any water leaks on that transmission line recently? I know we've we've fixed several in the time I was here.
I remember that one big one.
We had some really big ones, but I mean, any, every, when you fix it, every leak you don't have to fix, just save five, eight thousand dollars on your budget, so.
I think the last one we did on that was that one where we took two days to find it.
Well, no, we had the one that was broken in the ravine. It was spraying forty feet in the air with vibrators there.
Yeah, that's not bad, quite there. Um. From that, where are your households? The last one, I think, that we fixed, last time I remember fixing was uh. I think it was that one down there by Cohles, and we couldn't find it. We put a diamond. No, I fixed it up by first. I think I've been up there three times.
I've been up first twice.
I've been there three times.
Been by Hannis, Hannis, we did their yards, we did Baroldale's yards.
Yeah.
There's one piece up there in between Baroldale and other place you had to get fixed one day, but that was.
Taxes are gonna go up.
We're gonna raise the water rates.
That was big.
No, the taxes are gonna go up. We have budgets starting in fifteen. It's the conception that taxes are gonna go up.
Well, from this, I'm saying in general, because the inflation's gonna go down, is what you're saying.
Right, so we have to cut from the budget. Eh, that's a completely different thing, though.
Most likely. Realistic.
We're gonna work to stay within what the state doesn't define you, which isn't easy, but that's another whole topic.
Exactly, exactly. So so there's the possibility of that, and then there's also the possibility of now having to raise water rates. And if you look at the average person that lives out here, you know, I mean, your average family, they struggle already. I mean, to some of us, you know, it might not sound like a lot, but to some families it is.
So then in that.
I mean, it's it's tough, I said, it was, it, you've got your opinion, I've got mine. Like I said, it's just, it's just, this is not an easy decision, Mike.
Well, I'm not using an opinion. I'm just using basic logic in regards to what makes financial sense and sense for the future. I mean, if if you guys don't wanna vote on it, and you just wanna say, we're just doing phase one. Then I want the residents that want, that are gonna be upset because we're gonna end up down the road when the time comes. And we all still live here, and people are gonna be up in arms, and we have to spend three, four million dollars for a transmission line, then they can come to you guys. I'm not taking the bullet on that.
I mean, it's. Where would we be at with our intended use that that you laid out if we did turn this down? Or the plan that you have before?
If we got financing through the, through the intended use plan, through.
Yeah, if we turn, if we turn down this grant, where would we be at?
You would be at doing phase, phase two work. At no grant, the subsidized rate, so you would be having a two million dollar loan for thirty years at two and a half, two point four or five percent. That's a heck of a lot different than eight hundred and, I'd say.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight thousand. That's a lot of difference. I mean, to me, and I don't live here, so I'm just telling you, what you guys are doing is you got a hundred, a hundred year old bus, a hundred and sixteen year old bus at least, maybe not a twenty-five year. That's a lot of difference, I mean, to me, and I don't live here, so, I'm, but I'm just telling you, what you guys are doing is you got a hundred, a hundred-year-old bus, a hundred and sixteen-year-old bus at least, maybe not a twenty-five-year-old bus. That needs to be repaired, it's barely making it down the road, you've been slapping stuff into it so that you can get there. And you've come along and somebody said, okay, I'll do, I'll do a few things, I'll put some new tigers on it for you, but this bus still has problems. Now you've got some other grant line that says, hey, come on over here to this place, now you're gonna have to pay me a quarter of, of what I, what I, what I need. But I've got some trainees in here or whatever, so I'm gonna fix your bus for you, but I can only do it in this period of time. If you don't do that, you're gonna come back and pay me four times as much, so basically you're gambling that if you don't do that, that over the next year, two years, you're not gonna have to pay anything for that. And that the bus is still gonna run. I, I, to me, it just doesn't make sense, given the, the age of your system. And I guess my other question is, Eric, if they don't do this, how long is it gonna be before you guys are gonna knock another door again?
What, what's gonna happen is there, there will be a water supply emergency.
Yes.
There'll be a major leak, and everybody's gonna, you're gonna have to go to the Buffalo News and all the TV stations and issue a boil water notice to all your customers that.
They'd be loved, by the way.
They're gonna, they're gonna have to boil their water until you can fix that line, and then you're gonna spend money on repairs. That if, if you build a new line, you'll never, you would never have to spend, so you're.
What happened in Forest, Forestville, didn't they have a line problem over there?
Yeah.
They had a lot of problems.
Where are they at now?
Spending money like there's no money.
The villages actually voted to be dissolved.
Yeah, excuse me?
They voted to dissolve their village.
But the, the water still has issues, they're still, they, they were never metered, they were never anything before.
They dissolved the village and now the town boards.
Yeah, well, they have a special water district.
Now, didn't county just agree to bail them out, a certain amount of money?
No. They're, they're forming a new county water authority, county's not stepping in and bailing anybody out.
I thought the county came in and, and helped them with some of the burden on, on the town to help them dissolve.
The county is, is helping them form a legal water authority or county district. I haven't even read into it exactly how they're doing it legally, but, um, no, they're, nobody's giving them money to bail them out.
Is there anything you've taken?
They're, they're gonna get several communities that are gonna interconnect all their systems so that they have some redundancy and.
The only way they're gaining money is it's from the state from the dissolution, they're getting fifteen percent from what both the town and the village, uh, budget is. So they're gaining, because I was at the dissolution meeting, and from what it showed, they were gaining, they're still able to cut their taxes drastically. And everybody else is consuming, uh, excuse me, is consuming all of the debt, and but they're also eliminating the budget positions and everything, but anyways. They're gaining like a hundred eighty-eight thousand a year that they're getting from the state for the dissolution, now how long the state's giving that money for dissolution? Who knows, it's not for entirety, I can assure you of that, and it's only been going for the past six or seven years, but that's the only money they're getting is from the state for dissolution. Nothing in regards to relief or aid in regards to their water system, they're.
See, what I, what I heard at the county level was the county, to help ease the burden on the town for them dissolving into the town. The county was helping them try and reduce some of that.
You know, that's all with the, with the state, with the, with the, with them dissolving.
One of the big issues I see here is if we, if we don't get this grant, and then two months down the road, or two years down the road, when we do have problems, you can't go write a grant when you have an issue. So it takes, we've seen how long this is, I've been working on these grants for five years, and, uh, I mean, we've been pushing and pushing and, and trying, and we even had the, you know, the contaminated well, and. And all kinds, we played every angle that we could, we could possibly get to get grants, and this is how long it took to get here. So, I mean, if you have a line go down or something happen, and it's gonna take years, you're gonna have to front the money, I mean, you're gonna have to borrow it. And it's, it's not a planned thing, I mean, it's, so when you're in a state of emergency, then it's your greatest, nearly as friendly, and, and no one's this kind, I mean, I, I.
A planned borrow versus an emergency borrow.
I don't, I mean, this has been something that's, I mean, municipal solutions, you guys have been looking for grants for us, I mean, I'm trying to think of when the well was contaminated, that was in two thousand and ten, is that when we found that, is that when it was?
At least four years, four to five years.
So, I mean, we've, this has been something in motion for four to five years, and the best that we've got is a one point two million, um, total one point eight billion dollar grant. I mean, that's, that's huge, I mean, it's huge, and, and let it, let a million and one point two go, I, I, I don't understand it, I, I, I think that's the. If we let the one point two million go, what's the chance of getting a loan?
No, we stopped this money, I don't think.
I thought it was three years.
It is three years, but I don't think I can tell that this agency, that, oh, by the way, they wanted to give you money and they don't want it this year, they'd like it another year. I think it's entirely possible that they're going to say, well, that's nice, you've had your chance, you get one shot at this. There is only one water grant per community for water and one for sewer, that's it.
I mean, I understand the logic of it, that's the part, you know what I mean, but like I said, and we've had this conversation before you were here, but, you know, I mean, we're sitting on the seat and we're, we're speaking for everybody else if you have, that's the tough thing. And like I said, I don't mean any disrespect, but Mr. Walters, I mean, your job is the water quality, of course you want everybody to have pristine water, I mean, you know what I'm saying? And I get that, and Jake, you know, I mean, you're engineers, you're gonna make money off this project too, I mean, it's gotta be a win-win for everybody, you know, and that's the thing, it's just.
It's not even a question of the water quality anymore, you've got your filtration plants, the problem now is, is the transmission line, like, uh.
Getting it to the filters.
Well, I understand.
If you're producing the water way out in the town, and if you can't get it into town, what, what good is it for people?
Double digits for people.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's like, you know, it's.
I, I really don't think it is. I think if we had every single resident in the village that was paying a water bill here, and understood that it, for better quality, for, uh. Uh, an efficient meter reading every, every quarter, or every month, whatever the case is. Thirty cents a day to not get a flyer saying you need to boil your water.
And, remember, remember, a couple of months ago, we had the DEC guy here talking about the Black Murrone again, and we had the whole debate. Yeah, if that transmission line fails and you can't use your spring water, how much more expensive is it to use the well water? Now you have to pay all the electricity for the pumps, you know, and it's just gonna cost you more to produce water, and you still have the contamination in that well, so.
And their treatment plant doesn't work yet either, so.
Right, so, I mean, the, the options you have, if you lose the spring water, it's more expensive to produce it, get it down here, you know, and treat it, and.
When we've had to pump, we've probably spent ten to four thousand a year on electricity.
When we, when we just had slow springs, yeah.
You've got all that.
That's not, that's not, that wasn't twelve months out of the year, that was the, the dry season.
If you lose the, if you lose the transmission line between Cobal well and the village right now, if that happens tomorrow, you don't have a water source.
But, you're, you're saving all your customers' money by not having to pump those wells, by.
Eric.
Having that transmission line there for the next hundred years, because you're saving all those residents, all that electricity over all those years.
You've walked our spring lines.
Oh, yeah.
Every, every, every bit of them, and, and there's some spots, there's leaks that are gonna happen, and, and you can't get equipment there. You're gonna have to, I mean, there's some, and you go look at the Beaver Dam or Lake or whatever you call it over by, by reeds, and it's getting, it's bigger by the day, you see it, and. John got a piece of equipment in there once, how, how'd you get it out?
A lot of hours.
So are we gonna address this issue by doing this project, or are we gonna?
It'll, it'll eliminate, it'll eliminate the need of that line, yeah, that line will eventually end up abandoned.
Yeah, you won't go through that, that land anymore through the swamp.
You know, there's, you know, the, the, by Sweeney Hill, there's a pond right there, our, our water line goes underneath it, I mean, you go down by Cobal well. We had the leak there where the, the creek undermined, you know, what, forty, fifty feet of our pipe and it dropped out in the water, we looked for a whole weekend trying to find the leak. Couldn't find it, had no idea where it was, and, and at that time, we had to shut the water off in the village and run off the reservoir, because we were draining our reservoir. You know, it was a six-inch line running wide open into a crack, I mean, it took us days to find it, and.
The worst section of the line goes from the, from the black, from the Cobal well to that corner, it was on three fifty-three, it's in the side bank, you can walk it, you can look at it, there's trees growing up against it.
There's no bolts, I got, I wish I had my other thing, I, I got pictures of, of the line on top of the ground with pine trees growing around it, as the trees grow, it's kind, looks like it's raising. Was raising the pipe further out of the ground. Um, and you go look, I mean, there's, there's tons, there's hundreds of feet with no bolts in it, no ears left on the pipe.
What was that well down on Waverly Street? We used to have a well down there that we pumped.
What, on Tannery?
Or Tannery.
Yeah, yeah, that's abandoned.
Yep.
And they had very poor quality.
Yeah, that was banned.
It's all for water.